Hey Redheads, it's your favorite girl from the Midwest, Chicago Red. And this evening, I went to the special board meeting held by the trustees of the Village of Dalton. It was, it was a calm meeting, there were no fireworks, the business got handled. And that's really what a board meeting should be about when it's village business. It should be about the business. And so, I'm going to allow that video to play, and you all have a great day.
The special board of the trustees meeting, today is Monday, May 13th, November 24th, and the order is six thirty-six P. M. Trustee Norwood. Trustee Stan Brown, who's absent. Trustee Tammy Brown.
President.
Trustee House.
Present.
Trustee Holmes, he's absent. Trustee Belcher, here. Trust, Mayor Henry, he's absent, and Park District's present. We have a war. In absence of Mayor Henry, I am requesting that the board make a motion to appoint Mayor Pro Tem.
I made a motion to appoint Secretary of Justice Jason House as Mayor Pro Tem, second.
Okay, we just actually.
We're in here.
Okay, sorry about that. So, we just, Trustee Belcher made a motion, and Trustee Norwood, second, to appoint Trustee House as Mayor Pro Tem for today, so now we're getting ready to take the vote. Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed, to appoint Jason House as Mayor Pro Tem.
Good evening, everybody, I'll ask if we can go right into the agenda of Stanford Fest Legions. Fest Legions, to the quiet of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask former trustees, please, a prayer, please.
Everybody bow your head. Father, I come to you today just to say thank you for all that you have done thus far for this village. Thank you for waking us up, thank you for allowing us to assemble here today, Father God. Thank you for our families, Father God. Thank you for this board meeting, Father God, and may everything go well tonight, Father God. Thank you for looking out for the residents of this community, in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, so we'll go into general announcements, a brief review, just so we can have it on the record. This meeting was called by three, rightly called by three trustees, Trustee Brittany Norwood, Trustee Kiana Belcher, and myself. The meeting was properly posted, approximately 3:00 P. M. on Saturday, given the required 48-hour notice. Meeting all requirements for a valid, valid meeting of the board trustees. I'll ask any board trustees at the time if there's anything on the announcements?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to give an update from the Park District, that the Blackstone Park, they received permits, so they will be moving more, they'll start in June, or when, um, if it's possible. They take care of, so start in June, their project will start. Also, um, how's it? May, what's that? I'm sorry, I have one more day. Uh, May 13th, so, May 18th, they have a looped swap here also. The park is gonna have a looped swap, but it starts at 9:00 A. M. So, then, uh, there was some flyers, there was some flyers, where, uh, if you could, make sure that you registered. And then, July 20th, my healthiness, our part, where some of us like to actually put stuff in the calculus. July 20th, former trustee E. S. D., when we have his MS swap, um, there are flyers also, and if you could please register. When registered, it makes it easy to take account of how many people that may possibly attend, so, um, we have that written, so, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just an update, we are having a deputy register class, the date is to be determined, but I am looking at June the 1st, that's the day I'm looking at. Deputy register class, here at the Park District, uh, June the 1st is the date we're looking at. Anybody is interested, and becoming a deputy registrar, please see me after the meeting, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, happy Monday. I have a few park announcements also. The Park District, uh, favorite Park District, have a bingo, bingo, two booths here, uh, you know, part, from 11:30 A. M. to 1:30 P. M. Um, this year, they're also gonna continue their line down Wednesdays, where they're gonna have live music series, um, they're looking for food truck vendors, um, food trucks, retail vendors, so you can contact our park if you have any questions. Their phone number, seven zero eight, eight four one, two one, one one. And for myself, I want to thank everyone who's been registering for our third annual Family Skate Night. I'm super excited, right, because we know that a family that skates together, stays together. So, if you haven't registered, please do so, and you can contact me, uh, seven zero eight, nine six eight, four two nine seven. There, there is free, uh, this is a free event for adult residents. Or you can email me at bnorwood@b-o-b dot org, for registration. We're also going to the Chicago Skydome, so I'm super excited about that. Um, we have run out of tickets, but please, um, tune in on our adult trustee page, so you can keep up with our upcoming events, but I do hope to see you all in that one, thank you.
I want to make an announcement, Ms. Jolie, I want to ask if you know why I'm announcing this unit, I was, uh, I said.
The park district got off here in San Jose tomorrow, uh, visiting, the wind, uh, the wind. It'll be here Wednesday at 6:00. Part of the, um, vendors for the truck that, I didn't know, I heard the park, um, talking about the Soul to the Bone Band, will also be here.
Thank you very much. I also want to make sure that we, uh, that we acknowledge our, our host that allows us the microphones, DJ Golden Gruber, thank you, adult resident, for. It's really special announcement for our, our host overall, Dalton Park District, and all the partnerships that they do. So, I see we have Mr. Sandra Wells in the back, as well as our president, Cleo Jones, I want to give thank you very much for all your support. Uh, that said, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna go into the village's first report, so I'll pass it to Michael.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who were present at Monday's, last Monday's board meeting, you heard me speak about my minutes not being added to the regular board meeting agendas, so unfortunately, I have to wait till we have a special board meeting to get my minutes approved, and that is not how it should be done. They should be placed on the agenda for the regular board meetings. I turned them in time to be placed on the agenda, but they're never put on the agenda. So, tonight, I am asking the board of trustees to approve the following minutes. The special board meeting for Thursday, March 1st, 2024. Regular board meeting Monday, April 1st, 2024. The postponed regular board meeting that was, took place on Monday, April 8th, 2024. And the special board meeting that also took place on that Monday, April 8th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes that have been registered by Park Key, clear, second?
Second.
Okay, here, motion and second, any, uh, any discussion? None, we're gonna keep this on going.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you very much, board of trustees.
Okay, there is no old business on this agenda for new business. Item number eight, we not have sufficient documentation to be able to proceed, so I'm gonna remove this item off the agenda, but I'll ask board members to make some comments prior to removal of this item on the agenda.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just so, uh, people, they have read it, and, um, I'm just gonna give my opinion, uh, why it should be tabled until we give more information. Um, because Sarah has been our CPA for a long period. Uh, we have a finance director, and a finance director, and here we have also, uh, our administrative and executive services. And all these three sets of people have their, their operation, our finances, and so forth. So, um, to see something on the agenda that says we have to move money from one fund to another, back to the general fund, I, it drew concern to me, because if you're issuing invoices, and you know how to take and help a right item, why would you be moving money from there, lower fuel tax fund, to the general fund? And then, when Trustee House sends emails to say, well, can we have documentation to back it up? We don't receive documentation. So, um, Trustee Belcher just feels that until we're able to actually get invoices or more documentation to support while we need to transfer this money from, uh, the lower, lower tax fuel fund into the general fund, I think that we should place it on, that's just mine.
And if I may, I'll add a little bit more, uh, well, a little, a little more to that as well. Uh, just for additional clarity, the request that was, uh, provided to the board is a transfer from a more fuel tax fund to the general operating fund, which is a restricted fund. Upon, upon receiving that, we did, especially given the, uh, financial times we're in, make an immediate request to ask if we're gonna authorize this transfer from the restricted fund into our operating fund, we would like a breakout of the items that are gonna be paid. How is it intended to be spent? As of this time, we have not received that documentation, and given the, can, given the, given the board's concern on how spending is going right now, uh, we felt that it's appropriate to give the opportunity for them to share with how the expenses are gonna be paid. At this time, we have not received it, uh, we are not at a loss, so if we are provided with adequate documentation at a future date, we can reconsider at that time. However, right now, we don't have documentation, so we're not gonna be proceeding on these, any of this, it's a area. Uh, any additional comments?
Uh, my only concern is that if we transfer those funds, um, the vendors that is supposed to pay, can the check be cut directly to the vendor? Not put in general funds, because they can do whatever they want to do, whether they want to. My concern is that if we're gonna transfer that money, then it goes directly to the people that it's supposed to go to. That's a big concern, we just transferred over money, and they still have, you know, access to that money. So, that was a concern of mine. If you're gonna transfer, make sure it's transferred, and that those checks are cut to go to the vendors that we want to pay. That was a concern of mine, thank you. We want, uh, but the one we need is.
This item in particular, I want to say for me, um, is one of those things which kind of puts, is a pickle. When, as a resident, we know that, that there people say that, you know, the administration say, hey, we need this money to move forward, because we need to, there's things that, that needs to take care of, which we understand. But overall, we have an administration that has a lack of transparency. Um, you have to take things, a lot of things into consideration before moving forward. So, as a team, as a board, we did do our due diligence, and, because I did consider it, right? I said, well, hey, if we need these things, let's at least consider it. And Trustee House stated that he did contact the administration, and it was when they did respond to him, just stating, um, how the money is gonna be spent, because you always hear us say, hey, we understand that money is to be spent, we understand, but we have to be responsible. Um, so, as a trustee and as a resident, I just want you all to know that I did ask Trustee House that if they can provide us with information, um, it is not too late for us to make another decision once they provide us with the information needed to make an informed decision. But I just want you all to know that at this time, with the information that hasn't been provided, you know, I'm just not comfortable moving forward, thank you.
Okay, with that, we're gonna transition to our next item on the agenda, which is item B, the discussion and authorization of ordinance number 24-004, the issuance of $90,000 to $3,000 tax, taxable general obligation bond, Series 2023, of Village Dalton, Cook County, Illinois, for the levy and direct annual tax efficient pay principal and interest of said bonds and approving a tax escrow agreement. Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 24-004, clear, second? Okay, here, the motion and second, um, all right, I'll leave with the discussion, so, uh, any additional comments? Uh, the need for this, uh, this came up, well, there's two, two components of it. Uh, a few weeks back, Trustee, uh, Tammy Brown was, uh, notified of a delinquency that the village had with homeless disposal for garbage services. Uh, upon getting that notification, uh, Trustee Brown immediately kind of routing troops to make sure that we brought, brought everything current with, uh, homeless, because we know that's a big, that's a huge, that's a, that's a huge service that we shouldn't even, uh, consider playing around with. Uh, in addition to doing further research about the status of our payments, the board also recognized that, uh, in December, we get our annual tax levy, we approved the exact same amount of a tax levy, which included the same amount for a bond that was assisted with the payments to homeless disposal. Uh, and every previous year, once the board made that approval, around February to March, the administration would take that, talk with our bond attorneys, and present the board with the ordinance necessary for that bond to be carried out. Uh, this year, because the administration could not get an increase in the bond, because they requested the board to increase it to 1.4 million, and the board said we're gonna use the same amount as the previous years, um, the administration decided they would not present this information to the board of trustees. Subsequently, in researching this, we discovered that we have missed the deadline for this bond to be filed, which was, which was late March, I believe, March 27th. However, we, uh, worked with our legislative attorney, and the legislative attorney was able to assist with getting that extension, as long as we got this bond passed, uh, as soon as humanly possible. So, that facilitated the need for this urgent and quick meeting that we're calling, so we can make sure that the bond is approved, and that, and that keeps us in good standing and raises the risk of our garbage disposal company. Uh, so, having said that, I'll ask any board members to make some comments on this. Okay, here, no comments, I'll ask Park Key for roll call.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, and item C, is the discussion and authorization of the ordinance 24-005, an ordinance establishing the position of Mayor Pro Tem. So, I will, I will read the ordinance into record. Uh, whereas the Village of Dalton, in Cook County, Illinois, is a whole municipality in section 6A of Article 7 of the 1970 Constitution, Table of Illinois, and such due to exercise powers pertaining to the government, uh, whereas the village board trustees find it in the best interest and health and safety of the, safety and welfare of the village citizens, to permit Dalton to explore the empty appointment of permanent Mayor Pro Tem. Whereas the village mayor, Tiffany A. Henry, refuses to attend special meetings approximately 25 minutes, called by the corporate authority authorities. Whereas Mayor Tiffany A. Henry has refused to allow village business, except overacting vetoes, to be put onto regular village board meeting agendas when requested by a majority of the corporate authorities since 2022. Whereas the village cannot continue to service and provide vital services to the residents without the ability of the corporate authorities to conduct the necessary business of the village, and whereas the village is under severe financial distress with the majority of the board trustees not receiving financial orders as requested. Whereas there is no, no village attorney or finance director, and the village administrator is under federal indictment for bankruptcy fraud, and whereas the, the board trustees must call special meetings in the absence of the mayor in order to attend to the business, the regular business of the village. And whereas the, the mayor, Tiffany A. Henry, is frequently absent and incapable of performing the, off of the official duties of the elected mayor due to her frequent trips to, to other states and her refusal to attend legally called special meetings. And whereas due to the emergency necessitating its adoption, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately following its passage uh, in publications provided by 65 I. O. C. H. 51-2-4. Uh, so this would establish a Mayor Pro Tem, uh, permanent for the Village of Dalton, that will be consisted of the senior trustee, unless a majority of the corporate authorities uh, vote to appoint somebody different. Uh, so with that, um, I would ask for a motion that we approve ordinance, what is this, 21-24-005? Okay, motion for Trustee Norwood, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, do, I will just comment, uh, briefly on this item. Uh, this is not a replacement, this is, this ordinance is strictly in the refusal or inability for the mayor to do her duties and appoint, so when, and appoint senior trustee uh, to step in and make sure that the necessary documents are signed, and village business moves forward. That is the clear-cut intent of this, because we have many cases where village business, uh, cannot go forward. We've had to sign intergovernmental agreements with Park District and other documents, and the mayor just refuses to do it, so this is a mechanism that will allow us to keep not normal things moving forward. Uh, any initial discussion, others?
For this item in particular, I think that is important for us to remember. I mean, as a, as a, well, Trustee House stated, this is just a case, but we need just a case, I mean, at this moment. We, we have meetings where we're all waiting 45 minutes just to get started, where we have an entire forum here, and we're waiting, while the administration adds makeup and gets dressed, and it's just not fair to us. Uh, we have to keep in mind that we have ordinances in place that are just not being followed. I know a lot of residents get frustrated, because they say, hey, make her, right? And, but all we can do is what we are doing at this very moment, which is put the ordinance in place, and hope and pray, um, that at some point, she decides to follow. But we are supposed to have two weeks a month, um, as you all know, that's kind of what happened there. So, when we get to the meetings, we're supposed to have discussion, and as you all noticed, we can never get questions answered, even during discussion. It's set up so that as a community and as a board, uh, we have these, this upcoming that the administration says, hey, this may be a great idea, and it's supposed to run into, or pass the board, put it on the agenda. Everyone's supposed to be present, they can have a discussion, we can see at that moment how residents feel about it, and then at the very next meeting, as a board, we can take everyone's thoughts into consideration, and we can make the appropriate vote. But these are just things that are not taking place at the moment. So, we're gonna continue to demand transparency, um, and hope for communication. As of now, I mean, for the last few years, we haven't been able to add things to the agenda. Um, but, we're gonna continue to have meetings here, until we can get inside our building, of course. Um, but we're gonna continue to show up, and be most right for the residents. So, uh, we thank you all for being patient, we thank you all for your love and support, and we're gonna keep it long, it's all yours, honey.
Okay, any additional discussion? Here, now, I'll ask Park Key for roll call, please.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Present.
Motion passed, oh, you said present?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and last, but definitely not least, we have here to go into citizens' address. So, anybody that would like to, um, address the board, please, uh, feel free to come up, and we have three minutes, we have a soft three minutes, I would say.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem, board of trustees, Madam Clerk, residents of the Village of Public, delivered the village to Dalton. Um, homeless disposal, that's a really touching subject with me. And I just have to go on and say it, because we, the residents, matter of fact, man, just wanted to $65 for my garbage picked up, and the rest of us paying for garbage, our garbage to be picked up, but yet, still, every year, we take out a bond that the residents have to pay back with interest, and it's like we paying a double bill, just like the water bill. And I would hope, in the future, that we rectify, because it's not fair to the residents, that we pay double for that. And I would hope to see that the money that we do pay out, be put into a separate account, just like the water bill money, so we don't have this problem with wondering whether or not our garbage is gonna be picked up, or we, uh, because I know they're taking that money and putting it into the general fund, and Chief Fermin and the rest of them, are spending the money, and the, and the, uh, mayor is spending the money however they want to spend it. And that's not fair to us, because we're paying the bill. Now, uh, part two of that question is, uh, the forfeit money, the paying vendors, because that should have been in the budget, and I know you all didn't have anything to do with that, that was Tiffany, you know, spending the money however they saw fit. Yeah, for the, for the over-freel tax, yeah. I know they was taking their money and spending it however they, they want to spend it, and we shouldn't have, we, the residents, shouldn't have to pay for that.
I will comment on the, for the garbage, uh, pickup. After we're agreed, we do want to get rid of that in totality. I will say that as a board, over the last few years, our goal was to gradually reduce it. When we came in, uh, we started at 1.3 million, uh, we dropped to 150,000 one year, and I believe this was like, 200 the following year. So, we have gotten it down from 1.3 to 900,000, to 900,000, and the intention would be to continue lowering it. Uh, we're facing with a kind of tough challenges, while we determined we want to keep it at the same level we used what we had last year, because simultaneously, we are getting calls from vendors, uh, hours of glue, uh, so we know we're in a bad spot, we have not gotten the financials since September of last year, so, we're kind of trying to do some best guess work, given a limited amount of information. Also, you're, you, you mentioned the funds do, we, this ordinance also establishes an escrow account, um, and quite honestly, it's the only way that homeowners would accept it, is making sure that the, uh, levy or the tax, the property tax levy goes directly into an escrow account to be paid directly to them, so that we don't have that risk of mismanagement of those ones.
Good evening, everyone, and we believe in Mother's Day to those that are mothers, and mothers of children that aren't yours. Uh, so the board, um, uh, Pro Tem, Mayor Jason House, I don't know which way to add those, but, uh, trustee, uh, trustees of the board, and, uh, Clerk Keys. My question is, and maybe you can answer, maybe not, okay, you just passed an ordination, uh, or, or ordinance for, uh, Mayor Tiffany Henry, because of lack of coming to meetings. What do we do with two trustees that does the same thing, because it's obvious they're not, um, servicing us? But yet, I'm sure they're still getting paid for meetings not attended. So, how do we rectify them doing that, or is there something that they can be held accountable for? Because to me, I think it's fraud when you're getting paid for something that you're not actually doing. That's my opinion, you know? So, I don't want to get up here and say anything, or listen up, but at the same time, my concern is our taxes, because at the end of the day, that's gonna affect all of our taxes. Whether you're renting, those that rent don't leave. Whether you're renting, those that rent don't believe that it affect them, but it affect them because it affect their, their landlords. Landlords have to pay taxes on their property, so therefore they're gonna raise their rent up for the, you know, as it was said here. So I don't know if that's something that you can answer, is there something that can be done? Um, can, I'm not sure if you can remove them, but I think I asked a question before. If they miss so many meetings, is there something in the ordinance that can replace them, have them move? But I think you said that becomes an appointment. And I think I, we, we probably do better leaving things as is versus getting another appointment because we don't know what we're getting. We know what we got, and if they don't come, that's fine. But if we get something else, it might be worse. Thank you.
These members and our public officials, uh, said basically a couple of questions, you know, we alluded to a couple of them. I'm thinking like this, okay, uh, anybody may not want to remove these incompetent, unnecessary, worthless individuals. Is that too harsh? Sorry. Can you remove them without actually firing them? Or possibly is there a way to have, if you have a mayor pro tem, you have, you have some trustees pro tem? Okay, so there's no way to do that. Okay, while about, since we have real access to the power of city hall, which I have, um, talked about excessively, is there any way that, um, we can withhold part of our taxes until we get back our consequences? We've been, we've been through this stuff every time we tell the story though. Okay, there has to be some way to get their attention. My thing is that people like Fleury, we should have, he, he shouldn't be running the taco stand. He's in here, he's in the office. Okay, and we also know that if you all get rid of him, uh, she's gonna come back and put it back. My thing is to make her do it. Make her do it. Make her explain to somebody somewhere, not now, but she can explain to the alphabet board that be I helpless for people while she kept this thing, completely corrupting this for our tax money. Okay, uh, there is one thing, something like that. She'll get that tomorrow for us, for us. We gotta pay these people. And it's like, we're paying for them to abuse us. And at some point, we have to make a strong stand in some way. I don't know if it's a good way to, to handle this, but you know? Uh, honestly, we have a choice. At some point, we have to do something, put her on record every single time. And make her explain it down the road. Because she gotta, she has to know even as arrogant as she is, that at some point, someone's gonna make her explain some of this stuff. So I'm just saying, this thing's gonna get genuine, even though we know she's gonna do what she's gonna do. But I think we need to, I think, I think we need to run a popper for her. That's just me. I think we need to do a popper for her and explain it to her. And that's more, explaining that she has to do, and she may have to finish explaining it, and then we'll adjust it. That's all I'm saying.
Can you hear me? Okay, um, my name is Roach. I'm a resident of, uh, I've, I've, I've been there for thirty years. I have a few comments. Um, I agree with Dan, that administration is, they are unable to solve problems. Smart people don't know that they can get together, communicate, and solve problems. Now this administration, she is a big thing. I don't know that some things that you already know, but I just wanted to go on record that we know what she is doing. And it will be solved. I wish she was down with the gaslighting and her propaganda videos. I don't want to see another video ever. I'm sure you're gonna make us a sound. It's always been hard times, and our times is bad. And so did our tax money. I looked up, I googled what gives a good video. And I have to bring them up to you. And I can tell you, not one thing my letters applies to, you know? The problem with our community, and what, uh, we know, is that she doesn't know how to obey the laws. She does exactly what she wants to do. It is already in our ordinances that they're sharing transparency. Receipts and documents should be turned over to other people, trustees. I'm just standing here and bringing up the bad intentions that she's made, and I don't know that. I only pray that I can help her and stop this mess.
Good evening, residents.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Mayor Pro Tem, clerk. Uh, I'm here, Leo Jones, President of Dalton Park District, Board of Commissioners. And we have Commissioner Harrison Abad, and also Commissioner Wells. I just want to thank the Board of Trustees for their diligent job in helping us move the projects of the park home. We were stuck in a hurdle, not getting the permits to give the parks for the kids and for the residents of Dalton completed. So we had crossed those hurdles. So now we have, in this very park here, one of the parks has been completed, new playground here, the arches here, if you guys got a two D stopover and see it. Also, the park under the fifty-fourth street is completed as well. We're moving along. We have a major project, which Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Trustee Belcher mentioned that it's gonna happen towards the end of June. That is a major park, which is, uh, Placeton Park, that's right off, uh, the expressway. That is gonna get a major overhaul. So those permits, on behalf of the trustees who helped us cross that hurdle, we appreciate them and all they have done to get this process, to get this thing moving. So now the parks of our community is gonna get the necessary upgrade. So the mayor, she shoots at the park, very often you guys hear her stating about sliding boards with holes in them, without plastic, sliding boards getting holes in them, uh, the vandalism that's going on in the park. God does, excuse me, how does vandalism, vandalism happen in parks? But when you see something, you must say something. She's the mayor of this town. Instead of her, reporting her, report like that, get the police to do something about it. Get the police aligned to the parks. We have security, we have security, but our security can only go so far. So instead of her speaking about those things, let's do something about those things. You know, if you want to sit in a board meeting and sit on that podium, what does the state have to say to this town? But this is your town, you say that you're for the kids, let's start doing something for the kids. Help us instead of talk about us. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Good evening. Now, my question is, isn't there something in the bylaws that? That covers, uh, how many meetings that everyone's can miss without, without including any, right? Is there something in the bylaws?
Uh, there is a requirement, uh, that you be present and available. There's not a specific number of meetings missed. Uh, so it can be pursued or pressed through, in, uh, to be through court. But that will take court action and could cost taxpayers money. And then it's ultimately up to the court system on what that will, how, how many to determine if the, the intent can affect her for absence.
So couldn't the trustees have a special meeting to charge the bylaws?
Well, it's actually a state statute, so if there's not a law, we're gonna buy all this, that's determined by the state.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I think you have way answered that question. Is there an ordinance going forth that you could do this? We can't do anything about the meetings that have been missed. But what about going forth? Is there an ordinance or some way that we could start looking at putting something on the books that that's not a meeting's miss? I'm asking.
Oh, yes, no, we have discussed that with our attorney, so I, I will have to give an update on what, if the ordinance, because with it being a state statute, an ordinance cannot supersede the state statute. But if we could put an ordinance there that supplements the statute, that, that's part of the research.
Okay, and I say so that if you do get it and it doesn't affect your salary, knock this down to two ninety-nine. Does that sound good?
That's a nice sentence.
That's about, sure they do. Okay, but no, all jokes aside, I wanted to bring up, uh, some of you, I'm sure, were at the tea on Saturday. And, um, trustee Belcher invited the architect for the building at a hundred and fifty. And I honestly believe he was a plant or fraud. And I say that because I reached out to him some hours ago with the phone number that he gave me. No company name, just his name and an email and a phone number. It sounds like he went to a personal phone. I asked for the name of his company and his licensing number of the state. Because we have researched and searched and had people look. He's not listed anywhere. I also reached out and spoke to Mr. Davis, the engineer that did the inspection, who put that stop order in place. So she ain't lying, I ain't lying, he ain't lying. There was no permit, and not one brick should have been moved until a permit was on that building. And I got that from him. So if anybody wanna see me about what I got to say, I'm gonna be here, in case we got some plants in the road. I back up everything I say. What do we do to put a stop order on that work? Because they were working today, and they've been working ever since that came out. And he says he should be paid by the village because he was hired, unfortunately, by Keith Freeman. So that's our bill. And if that's our bill, and he says, stop the work, then the work needs to be stopped.
Oh, yeah, I would like to move the challenge there. I would agree just to stop. I mean, from the board standpoint, we would have to notify the co-enforcement as well as, yeah, co-enforcement as well as the police. Yeah, we, we would have to notify, call the police, uh, for enforcement and just stay on top of that, uh. No, we would have to stay on top of the police and co-enforcement to.
Well, we know co-enforcement ain't gonna do nothing, and it's what they say.
Yeah, and that, that's really the one that forces them.
Can we, can we just say something? Because God forbid, they're planning a grand opening. They want John Fox, they want John Fox, I'm not gonna go in. And if something happened, do we even have that insurance that I mentioned? Do we, do we even know what we got, something we got a building? I'm concerned because if somebody gets hurt, y'all think we hurting now? Let somebody get hurt up there. This gonna be Maryville, whatever they name it. You know, but we got to figure out, we got to, we got to do something. Or, you want me to play with the game? Sorry. We got to figure out how to do something. You know, originally, it was protest. Well, I ain't for a whole lot of marching, I got a bad knee. But we got to do something because we're getting too many answers. It's this, it's that, I gave you this, I gave you that. Nothing seems to be real.
Did OSHA come out?
I was told that OSHA has to be called by either the, uh, person that's over it, you know?
Or a worker. OSHA doesn't come out.
Just with your citizen.
Right, it has to be a worker calling it, or the contractor calling it, saying that that, that facility is unsafe. I spoke to OSHA. So no, they gave me a number to the US government to call, US dot, USA dot gov to call. But OSHA doesn't deal with it. It has to be a worker call that they say that this facility is unsafe, I work here, or the contractor has to say that these grounds are unsafe. But OSHA cannot do anything.
And I understand you guys are working really, really hard, but, and we keep pressing them to do something, and I don't know what we can do. But somebody's got to gather together and find out how we start combating this. Because just sitting here as the lady said Saturday, talking about it, talking about it, we'll be back here next month, talking about it again, and the building will still be there until it's full. I'm not, I'm against the building, I told you all of that. But the building is there. I got to deal with it. But it needs to be done right, decent and in order. Because we don't wanna be on the news for one of these catastrophes. And if he is the architect and sits here and says, there's nothing wrong, and the engineer that inspected it says there is, who we gonna believe?
Me as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no additional citizens' address, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? And a motion to second, uh, clerk key, please roll call.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven twenty-two P M.